I don't know if someone.
Randy, Randy, do me a favor and go up there because when I listen to this.
I'm sorry.
Next week I won't be able to hear you.
No, the road shouldn't have been never put in there without it being a planted subdivision.
On any, on any plat, there's, they'll have outlined the flood zone A and flood zone X, but it is not. How do I put this? As floodplain administrators, my responsibility to let them know that and I point that out to them. It has to be on our plat, but there again. There's no one that I don't think that we don't have anything in our LDRs that states that the developer or the realtor has to publicly make the comment to the person buying his property that here they have to do this or have to do that.
I don't, I don't agree with that. Number one, if they got a house and subdivision down in there, they should make a road passable.
Correct.
Am I right or am I wrong?
No, you're correct. And, and here's the.
I'm right.
Florida is a buyer beware state, so it's up to the individual to ask the questions, but at the same time, Florida has laws that says if you know something, you are legally obligated to disclose that. So there's an exposure process when buying, but there's also a buyer beware. It's kind of a half of it's on you, half of it's on them. If they do know something and you buy it and then they didn't disclose that, but you can prove they didn't.
So it's all on them.
It's, yeah, it's kind of a mix between the homeowner, the realtor and the person buying the property. But ultimately it's the property owner's responsibility or the person purchasing the property's responsibility to ask the questions, to call the county. I mean, Mr. Andrews can help people all day long, but if they don't call, he don't know. And that's part of the problem. And maybe, I know this is kind of getting off topic a little bit, but it's related and it might help you on the future. One thing that I did for Columbia County was I actually met with the Realtors Association. So the Association of Realtors for the county, I had them call in a meeting, have all the Realtors, I mean, there must've been a hundred Realtors in there. And we did a workshop and we kind of just went through flood zones, all the different things. And, you know, gave them the number or web address to be able to go in and ask questions. And it helped out a lot because then they started sending their, if they had a client, they'd send their client to the website or give them the number to call. And that way, even if they weren't, you know, disclosing something or didn't know it, at least if they're calling the county, they could get the information necessary.
But can I say something? But it shouldn't have been that done before this subdivision went in.
Certainly, yeah. I mean, the roads and all the streets and the dedication, the upkeep and, I mean, that's, and that's what we're going to make sure that when this process is done and you have a ironclad set of regulations that. If they don't follow, they don't get approval. I mean, they're just not going to get a final plat or they're not going to get, you know, building permits or anything. So they might've.
Correct.
If they don't do it right, they're not going to get, correct. They're not going to get a building permit.
Right.
And then they're going to end up having to deal with if they illegally sell lots that are not platted, then they're not going to, they're going to have to deal with homeowners suing them over selling them lots that are unbuildable.
The other thing we talked about is, I'd like to see in this is drainage. Like I was telling you about that, that one subdivision, it's all built. There's no drainage in there. But now, and also they tied in paved roads into our county Lime Rock Road. So the people that bought these three and $400,000 homes are now expecting the county to pave the Lime Rock Road going in, which, you know, we're, we're not going to do. And, but, but the thing is now with these rains coming, the Lime Rock off the county road is running into a lot of those real nice homes yards. So their yards are all lime rock now because nobody had any planted, planning for, for drainage. And, and like I shared with you earlier, now if the county goes in there, cuts stitches on our road, then it's going to cause them even more problems because of the way the road, our road slopes and how they did. In other words, there was no planning for drainage.
Yeah. And you don't want to do that too, just for the fact that if you go, like I said, if you go in there and cut and all of a sudden now you're flooding him out, they're going to try to sue the county and say, well, yeah, you were, you were trying to do the right thing, but doing the right thing, it made it worse. And then, so, yeah, you, it's a, it's a catch 22 for the county and you can't win.
Right, right.
You're correct.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And another thing too, not just the, the drainage, but retention is, that's part of drainage. But, I mean, you can go in some of the neighborhoods that, like I live out near the golf course and that's an old, old subdivision out there. And there's not one retention pond out there. So when you, as you know, get into the development side of that, just as the pavement has a requirement, there should be a requirement for, you know, some drainage, some, some capacity to be able to hold that water. Cause I know that Commissioner Riddick has a, I know down in the Keystone area, he had an area that they, they had to dig a retention pond just to help out with the drainage down there. So instead of it being post, it should be pre, pre-development.
And, and the, and the Water Management District has come a long way with that. So the Water Management District has legal jurisdiction for permitting over subdivisions. So that's, the new subdivisions will definitely have to get permitting from the Water Management District. So a lot of that is, is kind of already luckily taken care for y'all. We will look at. You know, making sure that whatever's in here requires that they, you know, obtain the proper permits for stormwater. And we may even look at some additional criteria that might be beneficial for the county if it's. Y'all are St. John's here?
Swanee.
You're still Swanee? Okay. It's kind of weird how their line goes around, around here because sometimes the counties are split too. Yeah. 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 So we'll look at, we'll look at both the St. John's and the Swanee River and, and see what their permitting requirements. I'm, I'm real familiar with the Swanee River because I deal with them all the time, but I haven't dealt with St. John's as much. But, you know, we'll make sure that any new subdivision, it has the proper stormwater management systems. And speaking of that, one question I want to ask y'all is. Different local governments have different views when it comes to maintenance of the stormwater systems. And, you know, when you have typical subdivisions that have like half acre or larger lots, you generally have like 60 foot right of ways with paved roads that have swells. And the swells go and go into a retention pond, whereas if you have like smaller lot subdivisions, less than a half acre, it's usually curb and gutter with, you know, drainage pipe and stormwater inlets. it's usually curb and gutter with, you know, drainage pipe and stormwater inlets. But there's a question about, well, that's in the public right of way. Well, who's, who maintains it? There's also a question about who ends up with the maintenance of the stormwater management facilities. A lot of them, they like to put them in associations. Well, just like you're talking about with the roads, when they're privately owned. If you have a privately owned, um, stormwater management facility, um, they don't maintain them. And then, you know, when it's time to do maintenance inspections, they're calling the county commissioners or calling you guys and say, hey, can you come fix this? The stormwater blew out and you're going, well, we don't own that. We can't do it. There are some good things that came out of, of recent regulations as far as inspections and, uh, what's called operation and maintenance with stormwater systems. Um, they're now required that there be a, uh, a operation and maintenance identity, identity for all these, so all, all these new subdivisions will require to have some form of responsible party. And require annual inspections. The question is, is do y'all as a county want to be taking these on preemptively? So when they're being built, they're being inspected by, you know, the county inspector. They're being inspected by the Water Management District. Y'all have to accept it. Y'all know what y'all are getting and the reason why I ask is if you want to do this, we can, uh, set something up in your, uh, subdivision regulations where we can do what's called a M S B U, a municipal service benefit unit. And what that does is it creates a tax district, uh, within that subdivision. And there's an assessment on each lot that they pay annually for the maintenance and it goes into a bank account that can only be utilized for that subdivision. So if you set up an M S B U for like streets and roads or stormwater, it goes into a bank account and the county is the administrator that funds. And when you got, go repair a stormwater facility or you go, go in and put a, fill a pothole, you have a money that comes out of the account that those people in that subdivision are paying for. So in other words, it doesn't come out of your tax, uh, your taxpayers' funds to maintain subdivisions.
That just seems so twenty first century.
Yeah, it's, it, a lot of.
No, I know.
A lot of these counties are requiring it now.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and I, I would say yes. I mean.
Yeah, that's something that, that we haven't talked about in depth yet, but it was certainly on our radar was to establish an M S B U for future growth.
Yeah. But ninety time percent of the time, we, we absorb that.
Right, right.
So, Mr. Chair, maybe at a, I don't know, a, a very near future date, we can actually, today I was expecting that we would review our existing comp plan and then look at improvements, you know, towards it. So, um, but I hear you saying you want us to just to tell you what we need, wanted to add in. So i- if there's a a nearer future date that we can review the existing, kind of review that in, in summary, um, so that we can have a, a, a greater discussion. I have similar as, um, Commissioner Andrews mentioned in the Lauder area, just off of Carter Road, for example, it's a private, uh, area that people assume that belonged to the county. The people who lived there thought it was, should have been a county maintained. A part of the thing that makes it somewhat complicated back in the day, the county did go above and beyond on some of these private roads and they took care of it. But now we have to go strictly by our regulations and rules and we can't do that. But since it had been done all of the time way back when, the people couldn't comprehend why we suddenly were not helping them anymore. So clarification in that regard would help us in, in their plan. But, um, the other part was when we have to, on Carter Road, for example, where we have two moors, the, we have a lot of flooding that occurred there from the runoff, um, from there. And in the, uh, Pleasant Grove area, the same thing. You have a lot of flooding in certain areas that used to be maintained by the county, but it's not the county's responsibility. So being clear on some of those things.
Okay. Um, a- and regarding the old, the reason why I didn't bother going through the old regulations is we're basically scrapping that and starting from scratch. So that was the idea was these are old, antiquated. We don't want that. We want to go and we want to update this completely with a whole new set of, uh, regulations. So the idea was more than likely eighty to ninety percent of that would probably be scrapped. And it'll be rewritten. Um, so I didn't really feel like it would benefit to go to the old regulations just for that. Um, but certainly, um, I would be happy to do any and everything this board wants done. If y'all want to go through the old, uh, we can definitely do that, um, and do it like a line item and y'all will say, yeah, we like that, we don't like it. Um, so if that's something the board wants to do, we can definitely do it. Or if you want to wait till, uh, we have a draft and do it, then we can do it then.
Okay. Perhaps you could do a draft and then, you know, we can kind of, if there's something from the old that is useful, you know, we can discuss it. Um, that would be helpful to me.
Yeah. What I could do is instead of completely just, um, what we call repealing the entire se- the article, we'll do a straight through underline and we'll, if there's beneficial language in there, we'll keep it. And there'll be straight through underline. That way you can see what we're proposing to delete and what we're going to add.
Okay. That'd be helpful.
Just one more thing, Brandon. Um, on the lots in the subdivisions, I know some of the other counties require, like when you're doing a lot fills, that the lot fills are, let's say they're two feet above like roadway or whatever it might be, just using numbers. But that, that that's consistent throughout the development so that it's not, so you don't have somebody with four foot of fill on a site that's draining off onto a site that may have one or two feet of fill.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, um, there's, there, there's already a law in place, that's a state law regarding establishment of base flood elevations and minimum floor elevations on certain plats. So if you have a plat that is five acres or greater or has twenty five more lots, they're required by state statute now to have a minimum floor elevation for all the, um, lots and also to, if there's a flood zone, they have to establish the base flood elevation for any flood zones. So that's already a full statute. So that's good. Um, we will make sure that that's mimicked and or referenced in these, um, one or the other. Um, and you can make it more stringent if you want. You can say all subdivisions have to have minimum floor elevations for, um, the lots. And the, and the beauty of that is, is when they're doing the construction plans, that means they gotta come up with a grading plan for each lot.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, I see that a lot in, in my business too, you know, and I just want to make sure that, because that, it, it doesn't always occur now. So I'm just saying, moving forward, just want to make sure. Cause again, we don't want to end up with, you know, some people, you know, getting flooded out, you know, let's say you're, you know, two foot elevation in the center lot and then you got four foot elevation on both lots next to it. Then certainly the one in the middle is going to be the one that's going to suffer. So, uh, you know, and I know there's a cost associated with that, you know, as far as lot development and things. But, uh, I think in, in the planning process, uh, that those lots and, uh, through the review, through the plan review, that, uh, that that's something that's observed.
Okay. Yeah. That's a good one.
And I, I know this ma- may sound silly and there may already be something in place about it, but throughout this county, um, well, I'll speak for my district. Um, there's no culverts. I mean, on, under driveways, I mean, and I would just think that that should be a requirement to keep the water flowing and because, um, when there is no culvert, then it stops it up. And there's not much you can do about it. So, um, as they're building, I just think that they need to do it right when they, when they do it.
Yeah, um, there's a couple counties I'm aware of that have really good culvert, um, standards. Um, and I can look at some of that and see, and it may not necessarily be part of the subdivision standards because you're not talking about design here. Um, but I could definitely look at something and propose it to the county as far as, um, how to address culvert issues.
Will you do that and send that, send that to us?
Yeah, and I can, when I do the research, what I'll do is I'll, I'll, um, print off the regulations from different counties that how they do it. And I'll send them to Mr. Corningay and Mr. Andrews and, uh, that way they can share that with y'all.
Thank you.
And, and Board, one, one thing that, that I had on earlier, um, um, Brandon, when we were talking is again, with the subdivisions, they don't allow them to pave the subdivision and tie it in to a county maintained Lime Rock Road.
Correct.
Um, now Board, I don't know what we want to do there because, you know, you know, what if it's a mile long Lime Rock Road before the subdivision? But, but there's, there, I feel like there needs to be something in place that the people that are buying these real expensive houses know before they sign that contract that the county, just because they're buying that, the home in that subdivision, the county's not going to pave that road anytime soon. You, you, you see, you see what I'm saying?
Can I say something?
Yes.
That's, that's been years ago to my understanding. That if somebody comes in and makes a big platted subdivision, they're responsible to put the road in.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the road to, the, the total road to it. Yeah. So.
That is their obligation. The one that sells the land, sells the lots.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so Brandon, correct me or tell me if this is correct. Um, we're talking about a county ma- or a county maintained Lime Rock Road that you would have to travel down to get to the pa- the new paved road and the new subdivision.
Correct. Yeah. And so, um, I'm pretty sure, um, your L D Rs already addressed that issue. But if it does not, we will definitely make it a point to make sure that it does because you're right. There's multiple issues with putting a paved road and a, and a dirt road together. If.
On a planted subdivision, you can't do that.
Correct. I- if you, if, it's got to connect to a paved public road.
Correct.
And, and a good, a, a good example of that is, you know, if you have a dirt road, there's driveway aprons that lead to a dirt road. Why? Cause you can't directly abut a edge of a right of way or edge of a paved road up to a dirt road. It would wash out. It would just deteriorate. It would tear up your pavement. It was, is, that's why when you see dirt roads, there are always a paved apron that goes down into that road to keep it from tearing up your street.
I think that ordinance come in about twelve or fourteen years ago. Am I correct?
Sounds about right. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So if somebody builds a subdivision, they are required to put that paved road in there.
Yes, sir.
Am I right?
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I don't, I don't think everybody's, everybody's not doing that.
Right, right. Cause Commissioner Doherty, do you run across stuff like that in, in your line of work? I mean, is this, is this something?
You talking about like the gap in between?
Yeah, I'm talking about, you know, a, a Lime Rock Road going in, say for a half a mile. And then all of a sudden you got a nice subdivision off of it and everything and that's paved. But the people, when they pull out, then they have to pull out on a Lime Rock Road to get to a paved, paved road.
Well, I mean.
That's wrong.
It's not that it, you see it around, but, you know, again, it's typically, I mean, in areas that are around us, the development and the way the development is, that road's going to be paved before the road that's at the, the actual subdivision.
Okay.
But I can't think of too many places where, you know, you're traveling down, you know, a Lime Rock Road to get to a paved subdivision.
Well, cause it went off of Fifty Second. That's exactly how it is.
Yeah.
Um, there's, they just put that subdivision in there and now I get calls all the time. One, they want the county to take over the roads in the subdivision, which we're, we're never.
County's fault.
Yeah, we're never inspected and they want, um, and they, and they expect that road being paved.
Right.
But, you know, it, that's, that's the conversation we was having earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's, um, there's also different. So when, when, when you get into subdivisions and you're getting into lots, uh, or say gr- ten acres or greater, greater than ten acres. You know, there's a lot of, um, issues with, well, if I'm going to be doing ten acre plus lots, well, that's very expensive to pave, um, for a large area for that. And so there are some counties that have like a division of land process or have another process or other than subdivision where, where they do, um, like an unrecorded subdivision or a division of land, which would be like anything that's greater than ten acres. And what that, what that does is it will allow you to allow for dirt roads. Um, they would still have to put in like the D O T base, like they would still have to, um, construct it like they were going to build roads. They just don't have to pave the road. Um, but they would be private. Um, so it'd be private Lime Rock, but only for, um, you know, lots in a subdivision greater than ten acres. Um, I have seen that. I don't know if that's something y'all want to explore or y'all were like, no, we don't want to do that. Um, there's a couple of counties that do have, um, provisions for large tract subdivisions because when you're getting that, there's no way you can do ten acre lots on pavement. You would never, you, you couldn't afford to do it.
Right. And I, I don't want to hurt builders at all, none, you know, but, but maybe as you're working through this, maybe we can come up with, with something that'll work.
Yeah, I have some ideas, um, some stuff that I've seen other counties do, um, that I can kind of propose if y'all like. And, and again, when we draft this stuff, if it, if it comes out and you're like, yeah, we don't want to do this, we just X it out. Just take it out. But we can propose it.
Any, any other questions?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask, uh, Randy, is there anything that you've seen over the years that specifically needs to be addressed while we're revising all this?
No, sir. I think what we're discussing tonight is basically the point of this. I mean, that's, and again, we do have the ten acres plus subdivision, uh, definition in our L D Rs. And we just had one, but those gentlemen did come in here and lime rock the road. But as you said, ten acres or more are not considered to be a subdivision. If the lots are ten acres or more, they're not considered to be an actual subdivision. But yes, sir, that's basically what we're, that's the questions I had for.
So with them, Randy, they, they don't have to do anything. Cause of course I had three hundred acres that was divided in ten acre lots.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
And so it's just going to be a road that.
That they, yes, ma'am. Their responsibility.
River bend.
Because, because they're all ten acre tracks or plus.
Oh, that's the citizens', uh, responsibility.
That, that would be those individuals out there if they were to create a H O A, a homeowners association. That is not our responsibility. No, ma'am. Not this board's responsibility. No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Our public works director just came in and so, uh, Mr. Corningay, same question you just asked Mr. Andrews. I'd like to ask Mr. Dodds, Dobbs, if, you know, if there's something, um, that he is seeing or not seeing that maybe could be applied. I don't know if you guys have already talked about this or not, but.
No, no. I'd like to hear Jason's thoughts.
I mean, the, the one thing that sticks out to me is, is something in there, if, if it's legally possible to put something in there so we don't run into these situations like Ms. Andrews just spoke about, a three hundred acre plot with everything broke down to ten acres. And then, yeah, the citizens are responsible for it. But we see it time and time again, come before this board that, oh, we need your help. And.
Jason, I, I would, I would tell you that, uh, Brandon had just talked about, we could put language in there that would require them to build the, the dirt road, the Lime Rock Road to D O T spec.
Okay.
Would that be, that would be helpful?
Basically.
I don't understand.
All section of it required D O T with, you know, six inch Lime Rock base, the width, the, the, the drainage and the swells, they would be required to build it to the Lime Rock base, uh, compacted. So if something ever did happen and the county took it over, you could create an M I.
Uh, the county could create like an M S B U, um, and do a taxing authority for that subdivision. And then you wouldn't have to come back and redo the road itself. You just have to pave over because of the base and the Lime Rock, everything's built already. You just go in there and pave it. You wouldn't have to do any other work, just pave right over the Lime Rock if, if that was the case. So it allows, um, a compromise between. um, a compromise between the cost of developing subdivisions over ten acres um, and allowing private roads. But should there be an instance in the future, but I, I will say this. Of what I've seen in North Florida, the people who buy ten acres or greater, they don't want their road paved and they don't want people down it. So they typically want it to remain private. And that's kind of what I've seen.
Well, until, until ten years from now.
Yeah.
And there's holes big enough that a, a four wheel drive will go under. I mean, it's, and that's when it becomes the problem. Right now, it, I don't know because where they bought, is it very, very wet.
I went down there the other day.
And, um, but it will become a problem. I, I promise you.
Yeah, and the good thing about the, what he was talking about with these ten acre plus, um, what I would, and, and what I would be proposing, it would require them to actually put in, they would have to have construction plans. They would have to have stormwater management. So they would still have to comply with the stormwater and, you know, building the roads to standards. They just don't have to pave it and they're allowed to keep it private. Um, so they're, they're, it's not like they can just go out there and divide, you know, thirty or ten acre tracks and put in this little dirt trail. No, they're going to have to put in some, some effort and do stormwater and, you know, account for that stuff.
Can I say something? But shouldn't that be done when they was actually selling that property off?
Yeah, so, correct. So before they were selling the ten acres.
They should have had a road, accessible road in there.
Correct.
Correct.
If we put, I probably know the answer is, but if we put the, the wording in our policy, can we go back and make them do that?
Correct. Yes, well, you can't retroactive, but anything in the future, any, any new development
In the future.
would be required to meet the standard. And the good thing about that is you would have a process for the county to be able to review and make sure that they're meeting the standard. So they would have to make application. If they didn't, and they just went out there, ser- surveyed out thirty, ten acre tracks and start selling them, well, guess what? They don't get building permits.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Yeah.
Mr. Still. Go, go ahead, Mr. Still.
I'll, I'll sit down for.
Uh, Paul Still, one of the issues that we have in Bradford County is much of our drainage infrastructure was, uh, created in the early nineteen hundreds. It doesn't have drainage easements. And so maintenance becomes a real issue because you don't have an easement. And the, the question is, can you draft, can to what you're doing, some way to make sure that all these, these easements, that you do have these easements because it doesn't do you any good to get the water through a drainage feature that then is not maintained and can't.
Yeah, I got a couple of different.
So, yeah, there will be, um, requirements for utility and drainage easements uh, within the subdivision. Not only that, the, um, Water Management District now requires them. So when you submit your drainage, um, you know, engineering for your permit, for your, um, stormwater permit, they require those easements to be recorded and they require it to be, uh, dedicated to the public. So, um, yeah, there's, there's more than what the county mechanism, the Water Management District through state law has mechanisms for that now. And two, that's part of what we were talking about, the, the operation and maintenance agreement. All those easements have to be spelled out and put on the plat.
Okay. Or, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you very much. And, um, I guess we'll, this meeting's, and we'll just get back with you when you, when you get that together, just get back with us and.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be, um, over the next, you know, couple of months, we'll be drafting, looking at, um, and probably, you know, meeting with staff here and there to go over the drafts, um, before we bring it back to make sure we have, um, you know, as complete of a draft as possible before we present it to you. Um, that way, um, when y'all come back, um, you know, we'll have like a ninety percent draft. And then after y'all look at it and review it and have a workshop over it, we can make those changes and come back before the board for like a first, uh, hearing. And, um, hopefully there won't be any real issues or comments or everything will be addressed and this board will be have a set of regulations that they are happy with.
Okay, and if I can just say one, please write through River Ben.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, take a look.
Yeah, I want to look that up. I want, I want to have to get Mr. Andrews to take me on a field trip over there.
Yeah, or Jason, either one.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Are you going to be here to the end of the meeting or you got to go?
I'm. I'm, I'm sorry.
We've, we've, we've got his contact.
All right, go ahead.
No, I mean, I.
I wanted to talk to you about.
Okay.
About River Ben.
All right. All right, meeting's adjourned. All right.
2025, it's about 6:40 and at this time I'm gonna ask Commissioner Spooner to open us up with prayer and flag salute.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your wonderful love, your blessing. Thank you for blessing us to live in a free nation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for each and every one that is here this evening. Bless each and every person that is here. Help us to govern ourselves according to your will and that we conduct ourselves in such a manner that is pleasing for you. Help us in our meeting tonight as we address many serious issues that we do it in the best manner that serves our community. And we thank you, the Lord, in the name of our Father Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead each to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the list is the achievement awards. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Spooner and she's gonna...
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all for being here. It's an exciting time. Each year, the National Association of Counties encourages communities to apply for the achievement award. And this year, our county, Bradford County, applies for, on behalf of our partners, for the hubs that we have, the three hubs that we have. We have three. The one at RJE that was established in January 23 and also Lauding, which was established in December of '23, and the arts service down in Hampton in May of '24. And Taylor is going to do a little comprehensive presentation so that you'll know something about the three hubs. And we will be asking for those groups to come just after that. The chair will help us present the award.
The Bradford County Community Partners Health and Wellness Resource Hub project is a program that helps people live healthier, better lives. It does this by offering important services in three easy-to-reach locations across the county. These locations, called hubs, provide things like health checkups, mental health support, help finding a job, classes to learn about money and budgeting, access to computer and the internet. By having these services close to where people live, the hubs make it easier for everyone, especially those without transportation, to get the help they need. The program brings neighborhoods together, helps people live more stable and healthier lives, and gives them more chances to succeed. It also shows how teamwork between local groups can make a big difference and could be used as a model in other communities too. The Bradford County Community Partners Health and Wellness Resource Hubs proudly accepts NACO's 2025 Achievement Award.
Thank you. And we would ask that the Concerned Citizens Group from Stark, the city of Lauding, to come. And I believe that Ms. Patterson will represent the art program. And we have our guest here from the Health Department. It's a big deal when you can be nationally recognized for a small community like Bradford County.
Our condition is to come down. And she's very modest, but she was the first time I've come and recognized the need in Bradford County.
Patterson, Human Services Program, Special Department liaison, for the Department of Health in Bradford County. Achievement Awards means 2025 Achievement Award winner without continuing road progress. Such work, improvement, achievement, and success, has no meaning. The National Association of Counties now to award. 2025 Achievement Award for its program titled Bradford County Community Partner Health and Wellness Resource Hub. All right. Your call says this is for Concerned Citizens, huh? And then we have one for... This is for the city of Lauding. And then we have one for the arts program. And so if we can kind of come, I don't know, somewhere here. Either way you are, this way.
All right, let's go. One, two, three.
One more, I gotta take my glasses off.
One, two, three.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number three, the public hearing for impact fee ordinance. At this time, could I ask our attorney to please, I guess you wanna read this whole ordinance?
Well, I'm wanting, but I'm happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, cuz I can read that one.
In order to be known as the Bradford County Florida Comprehensive Impact Fee Ordinance, providing for the imposition and collection of fire protection, law enforcement, and emergency medical services impact fees, providing legislative findings and definitions, adopting processes and procedures for the imposition, collection, and administration of such impact fees, approving an impact fee study, adopting rates, schedules for the fire protection, law enforcement, and emergency medical services impact fees, providing that the impact fees will apply to all new construction not exempted hereunder for which a completed building permit application is submitted on or after October first, 2025, providing for the use of impact fees, providing for exemptions from the impact fees, providing for municipal participation, providing credit for developer contribution, providing for payment of impact fees, providing for changes in size and use of property, providing for review hearings, amending, restating, and consolidating certain provisions of the Bradford County Florida Code related to impact fees, specifically Chapter forty-three entitled Impact Fees on Land Development, repealing and superseding provisions of the Bradford County Florida Code which are obsolete or which pertain to the imposition of impact fees for roads, parks, public buildings, and library facilities, requiring periodic review of impact fee studies and this ordinance, declaration of exclusion from the Administrative Procedures Act, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing next effective date. Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd ask that you open a public hearing.
Is there any public comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to a motion and a vote. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance as read?
Make a motion. We approved ordinance as read.
I have a motion from Commissioner Thompson.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Andrews. Are any, any questions?
And I understand the importance that we have to have impact fees. I get it. I truly get it. But I'm concerned about the amount for the residential vote. We have the impact fee. We're gonna have our fire assessment. And then we have the increase in our, I guess, garbage and so forth. It's, it's important to have it, but I'm concerned about the amount. I think it's a little too much. I know I probably am alone in that, but sometimes it seem like we just nickel and dime our poor residents to death and so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Bear in mind that the impact fee only affects new construction.
I get it.
And the builder will be the one to pay the impact fee or the, the developer.
It won't be put on the citizens.
It will.
I mean...
I'm just saying.
Well, there's not a surrounding county that don't charge it.
And, and I do get it, that we have to pay some impact fee. I'm just concerned about the amount. And then I know that even if we have a developer, that is then passed on to the persons.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Cuz, cuz if you're building a $300,000 home, a $1,060 impact fee, I don't think that's gonna, that's not gonna hurt.
Absolutely not.
You know?
Well, and if I may.
Yes, yes ma'am.
And I understand what you mean, Ms. Spooner. Honestly, I do. But impact fees are just what they, what they say. What this is doing is trying to keep us from continuing to be in the hole that we're in right now. The impact of people coming in does affect the fire and rescue. It does affect, you know, it affects everything. It affects our schools. It affects our roads. But with what we have, until we, we have growth, like to, to meet our needs. And, and like you said, all the neighboring counties, they have this. And we've, we've, we've just kinda sat back and, and not tried to get where we should be. And this is, this is just a step forward, unfortunately.
And I agree. And we had it, but they put it, it was put on hold. City put it on, everybody put it on hold so that we can encourage more development. And we have to have impact fees. I'm just concerned, I would like to see this reversed for the non-residential, this, the, the amount of, of fee to be reversed.
It's a price of doing business. I mean, that's what's the other counties. It's a price of doing business.
And I don't have the exact number in front of me. I did have it a couple of months ago. The money we lost last year on new homes is close to $180,000.
Exactly.
That, that we lost just in one year. So, and then you add that up over the past three or four years. That's quite a bit of money that we, that we could have put to use.
And we need the money.
Any other comments? Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any oppose?
Nay, only to the amount, not the fee, but the amount that we're recommending.
Motion carries four, one. Okay, next, we have a, a public hearing for the zoning and land use changes that we've already done. Mr. Andrews?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. These are the ordinances that the, the ordinance to the resolutions that the Planning and Zoning Board passed in the previous meeting. Excuse me. So I'll read these. This is S-250603A by Newman Real Property LLC. Land use change from agricultural to commercial for Bradford County parcel number zero four seven six zero dash zero dash zero zero one zero one. And I will read this ordinance by title. This is, excuse me, this is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number ninety-one dash zero one. The Bradford County Comprehensive Plan is amended relating to an amendment to the future Land Use Plan Map Series of the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to application S-250603A by the property owners under the amended procedures established in Section 163.3161 through 163.3248 Florida statutes as amended, providing for the amendment of the future Land Use Plan Map Series of the Comprehensive Plan from agricultural to commercial of certain lands within the unincorporated area, unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. And again, we need to ask for public comments, motion, and a vote.
Is there any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Daultrey, second from Commissioner Andrews. Is there any other questions? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the rezon, the rezoning companion to this land use change. This is Z-25-dash-zero-one Newman Real Property LLC. Zoning change from agricultural to commercial intensive for Bradford County parcel number zero four seven six zero dash zero dash zero zero one zero one. And I'll read it by title. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance ninety-six dash zero seven Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the official zoning atlas of the Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application Z-25-dash-zero-one by the property owner of said acreage, providing for rezoning from agricultural to A-two, to commercial intensive CI of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And again, I'd like to ask for public comments, a motion, and a vote.
Any public comments on this item? Yes, sir. Okay, seeing no public comments, do I have a motion to accept the ordinance as read?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Daultrey, second by Commissioner Spooner. Any questions? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Ed Chairman. The next item, excuse me, is the land use ordinance that, again, to the resolutions we read at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. This is S-25-dash-zero-six-one-threeA by, again, Mr. Baterra as agent for the Batels. This land use change from residential to commercial for Bradford County parcel number zero one one nine four dash zero dash zero zero one hundred. And I'll read it by title. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number ninety-one dash zero one nine. The Bradford County Comprehensive Plan is amended relating to an amendment to the future Land Use Plan Map Series of the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application S-250613A by the property owners under the amendment procedures established in Sections 163.3161 through 163.3248 Florida statutes as amended, providing for the amendment of the future Land Use Plan Map Series of the Comprehensive Plan from residential low density to commercial of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And once again, we'd like to ask for public comments, a motion, and a vote.
Any public comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the ordinance as read?
I make a motion to accept it as read.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Spooner. Any questions? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the zoning change to the previous land use change. This is Z-25-dash-zero-three. Zoning change from residential to commercial for Bradford County parcel number zero eleven ninety-four dash zero dash zero zero one hundred. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance ninety-six dash zero seven Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the official zoning atlas of the Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application Z-25-dash-zero-three by the property owners of said acreage, providing for rezoning from residential mixed single-family slash mobile home one, which is RSF slash MH one, to commercial intensive CI of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orders in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And once again, I need to ask for public comments, a motion, and a vote, please.
Any public comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the ordinance as read?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Motion by Commissioner Daultrey, second by Commissioner Spooner. Any questions? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the last item on the zoning agenda, this is E. This is a road closure. This is part of the west half of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section twenty-one Township Five South Range, twenty-two East Bradford County, Florida. This is an application by Nicholas and Angela Price, presented to the Board of County Commissioners to consider the exercise of its authority pursuant to Chapter three-three-six Florida statutes to close and abandon the following. This is the norley fifteen feet and the westley fifteen feet of a parcel F, which I provide in the packet to the board. This is part of Bradford County. This is being part of Bradford County parcel number zero one three one one dash zero dash zero zero one zero one. And what this is, as we have done in the past, the big subdivision that was done years ago from Lauding to Ray, almost to Rayford, we call it wood lawn, all those platted streets that have never been publicly opened to the, or never been open to the public or went in to maintain or anything. But they've never been publicly closed either. So basically, this, this gentleman has come to ask the board to consider closing the north fifteen feet of his parcel, or the platted street that affects the north fifteen feet of his parcel and the westley fifteen feet of his parcel. Yeah, I need to ask for public comments, a motion, and a vote.
Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept this road closure?
I have a motion to accept the road closure as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Spooner, second by Commissioner Daultrey. Any other questions? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for the zoning agenda. Thank you, Board.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have public comments. The first one I have here is Citizen Joe. And if you would, when you please come up, just state your name and address if you would. If not, fine.
Oh, let's talk about impact and all this. Why isn't Bradford County trying to save somebody? Because I see an automobile accident. I was in Hampton the other day. Woman come out of her house with a baby. Ambulance, two fire rescue truck, the big tanker truck, and two police show up. Why all these vehicles showing up for a baby? I mean, I get it, but if the baby's in trouble, all, all you should need there is an ambulance, not two pickup trucks, the tanker truck from the fire department, and two police officers. Save a whole bunch of money. That tanker truck probably gets six miles to the gallon if you're lucky, coming all the way from Stark to Hampton. And they turn the lights off before they ever got there and just kept right on going back to Stark. Why can't you save some money like that instead of trying to pass it on to us? And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Paul Steele.
Paul Steele, one four one six seven Southwest one hundred first Avenue, Stark, Florida. It's starting to rain, and so I want to talk a little bit about flooding tonight. My experience is that we need about, after we come out of a dry spell like we have, have had, we need five or six inches of rain to sort of get things all saturated again before the water starts to flow. At least where I live, we've got seven inches. And so we're at the point where water begins, can be getting flowing off the land and causing flooding, flooding issues. So it's real important that we begin looking at some real critical parts of the county. And one of those critical parts is actually in the city of Stark. It's the Edwards Bottomland Project, mitigation project that's run by the Swanee River Water Management District. And that, the lack of maintenance on that project has resulted in accumulation of trash and debris and an overgrowth of plants that slows the water flow out of, down Alligator Creek, which is going to probably cause flooding in the city of Stark and all the way back up into eastern Bradford County, up to the golf course, the country club subdivision up there. And so I think the good news is that the local mitigation strategy meeting from the Emergency Management met this, this afternoon. And I believe Brad Witte is gonna be requesting information and letting Swanee River know we're concerned about that. But I would urge you also to keep informed about that project. And then the other issue is the buildup of trees across all of our waterways, really. The, the big ones that impact Lake Sampson and Lake Crosby are between Lake Sampson and Three Pipes and then from Three Pipes down to the CSX Trussel. And it's important for the county as you go into your planning process of, of money, how to spend your money, to try to put in some money in the budget so that the Public Works Department can have the funds to go in and clean out trees and trash that have fallen across those two areas, but also many other areas in the county where, where the drainage blockages occur. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. The last one I have is Mrs. Strong.
Good evening.
My name is Vianda Strong. Post office box five thirty. Lobby. I have a couple of things. We have a wonderful jail over uh, on the property. It's probably at capacity. We have all of these people that our government wants to house down in South Florida at Alligator, Alcatraz or whatever it's called. And we have Camp Landing that they want to house people at. My opinion, my opinion only, they pay two hundred forty eight dollars per person. I think that we should clear out our, our, our jail and house the immigration people in our jail, get the money. Then I, as a citizen and others, won't have to pay the fire assessment. There's the money right there. House the people, the people that are supposed to be in our jail. No longer, we first appear them, send them home. There's one way to raise the money. We house the immigration people, two hundred forty eight dollars a day. We send the people that are arrested, first appear them, send them home. These are our citizens. Second thing, the impact fee. We should have been collecting the impact fee all the time. We never would have had this problem. The impact fee has been something that I've talked about time and time again. The impact fee is paid for by the developer. I'm not sure why it's an issue. We should have collected it. We've had Wawa that's come around. We've had the racetrack that's come along. We've had um, TJ Maxx that's come along. We've had all of these peoples. Yes, they're in the city of Stark, but the racetrack was out of town. We've had all of these developers that have come in. We have to, you have the subdivisions that are out in the south end. We've had all of these opportunities that we've missed. You've had the hotel that's come in. We've had the stuff that's come in that we've missed out on money. We gotta think about the citizens also. Yeah, it's been growth, but I'm tired of the, but it's coming in on the citizens. The same way you're thinking about developers, you gotta think about citizens also. So let's think about the citizens and your problem with it being on the developers. Think about the citizens and what you're putting on the citizens because I don't want to pay that fee that you're putting on, on us with the fire assessment.
Okay, that's all the public comments I have. We'll move on to item six, approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve this consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Thompson, second from Commissioner Daultrey. Is there any questions? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five oh. Number seven. The first one I have on here is uh, Communities in School. Um, this is De, De Vilero. De Vilario. I should know it, I talk to your husband all the time.
He got it, he got it pretty close.
I just call him Jim though. Okay, thank you.
Good evening and thank you for the invitation to come tonight. We'd just like to give you all an update about Bradford Community for Schools. As you all know from the past, Bradford Community for Schools actually began in our community in nineteen ninety nine. So we've been around for a very long time. Way before that, I won't age myself, I was already with the Bradford County School District, as Ms. Spooner knows, because I had our lovely children. So we worked alongside of each other for many years, so I could attest for their good work even back then. Five years ago, I became the executive director, which has been a real blessing for myself and many students because I've gotten to see them kind of full circle, go from Rainbow Center, young pre K elementary age, right on through to helping them at the end of life or end of school life, career life with scholarships and other things. So I would like to thank you all on behalf of our board, staff, students and families for your continued support in what we're doing. We really are making a difference. So I brought you a brochure tonight. This is our updated brochure. I'm not going to read the whole brochure to you, but I do want to just share with you what our mission and our vision are because I think it's important to note. Our goal is to connect with students by surrounding them with a caring community of support, empowering them to reach their full potential and achieve success in life. So that is a good statement to sum up by saying that we are really a very strong dropout prevention program. We moved away from our accrediting folks would be a nice way to say that a year or so ago because they were requiring more and more of us with zero funding coming down. So we now are a standalone five oh one C three, operating with funding from two sources, which I will share, and then with community support as with your, from yourself. Our vision is to provide a supportive environment for student improvement and success through the connection with each student to a caring adult mentor and community resources. And we're trying to help them sixth through twelfth grade be successful in school and then beyond as well. I would like to gladly and successfully report that we had another one hundred percent potential of seniors who were this year up for graduation. All of, we had twenty six students at one hundred percent graduation rate. All of our twenty six students graduated. Some of that was pushing, pulling, tugging, begging, bribing, pizza lunches, whatever it took, but we managed to get once again a hundred percent of our students graduated. Um, we also were able this year to give nine scholarships through our take stock program. We awarded seven students, which means they'll have a free two-year college education at the college of their choice. Of course, we're pushing Santa Fe because it's small, it's local, classroom size is small and they get a lot of support. Then the other side of our program, there's take stock under our umbrella, then our communities for schools staff. We also through fundraising, which I'll share in a moment, we were able to give two scholarships, which we have named the Cheryl G. Canova Scholarship Program. Uh, many of you all know Cheryl Canova. She worked tirelessly for fourteen years with community for schools um, in leadership capacity. She now has stepped down, I understand that. She's got family to take care of and other organizations. So we thought it would only be right to honor her um, with two scholarships in her name. So we were able to scholarship nine students this year, which I think is phenomenal from a small five oh one C three. We also became a part of a program at the state level which incorporated seven of our seniors, which now at the end of this year will be twelve of our seniors when they graduate. Will actually, in addition to what we're already doing, will have four-year free ride scholarships, including money for some incidentals and extra things along the way. So we continue to write grants, we continue to reach out. Um, our goal is always students first. Um, we have a wonderful working board. We have a very small part-time staff. We do not work for very much at all, no benefits or any extras. I can truly tell you that our funding goes to our students. Uh, we have fundraisers. Every month we do a bingo. We would love to invite you all out to bingo one night. Um, some of you all have come and it's a lot of fun at the downtown grill. That's usually the last Monday night of the month. And then we also have our annual golf tournament. So for our golfers, and last year we talked about a few of you all golfing, um, October the twenty fourth will be our annual golf tournament this year. We're going to move it back to Stark since our Stark Golf Club is in such great shape. And of course, we always wanted to do business local, so that's a plus as well. So we have take stock dollars and then we have community um, for schools dollars, which comes from Northeast Florida Career Source. We have a partnership with them, which has um, been a wonderful, wonderful relationship. There's a list of items here that tell you some of the benefits for our students. Um, we have an after schoolers club, which we've partnered with Tobacco Free that's been great. Uh, we actually have the Angel Tree Program at Christmas time, which our gifts provided through Life Spring Church. Uh, we have back to school supplies. We have mentoring resource referral to other agencies. I'm going to skip back to the summer youth program in a moment because that'll be our highlight here. Our hanger resource room, which provides clothing, shoes, personal items, school supplies, whatever might be needed. Our weekend backpack program throughout the school district last year was regularly feeding about sixty seven children with backpacks completely filled every week and going home with students on the weekend. So that was our need for, for food. And then our scholarshiping, which I've already shared. So I want to tell you a little bit about and thank you to Career Source Northeast Florida for helping us with this. We this summer were able to employ twenty high school students between ninth and twelfth grade. We had several, we had twelve to fifteen various employers offer their work sites. All they had to do was provide a work site and be a mentor. We took care of everything else. We met with students, we talked about employability skills, we talked about great way to lose your job, great ways to keep your job. We met with employers, we've met with parents and we're wrapping that up um, actually this week. And it's been a very, very, very successful program. So many of our students, they got to choose, choose their location and then the employers met with them, um, interviewed them. So that was a, a nice process. A lot of our kids have never been employed before. They can use those hours for community service for college. They of course were paid for those hours at thirteen dollars an hour, which is great. My first job, I think, paid about three dollars and seventy four cents an hour, so thirteen dollars sounds like a lot of money. And then of course, many of them are also able to keep these part-time jobs or will put them on a resume and come back later for assistance. Um, this is our third year doing this. We continue to grow every year. So once again, funds are instrumental in helping us do this. Um, our employers are very, very pleased. They, they really wish we could continue through the school year, but obviously that would be um, something very expensive to do. Our future goals, um, we actually have six staff members. Three are housed at the high school. Then my secretary or financial officer and I are housed at the Career Tech Center. Future goals would be to expand to the middle school. We do include middle school students in the scholarshiping piece where we're looking at their grades, we're looking at their attendance and their behavior, meeting with them regularly, but we would love to have a person that we could actually staff at the middle school that could kind of be on site like what we have at the high school. So this past year, we served close to a hundred students, which I think is admirable for a small staff of six part-time people. We're not really part-time, but we'll say for all intended purposes that we are. Um, and we have an excellent working board. We have ten members on our board and they're very, very helpful in anything that we ask or need in support of what our students require. Ms. Spooner, thank you for being a mentor. She continues to shine and be a mentor in our community and supports our endeavors. Thank you so much for that. Um, we are part of a program, uh, our second year where we're trying to recruit more male mentors. So through church groups or local organizations which we speak at, would love to have more men uh, become involved as mentors. It's very important. Simple to do, background check, and then you would meet with your student for about an hour or two per month, just to listen, share and support their endeavors. So without going through the whole flyer or brochure, that kind of sums up what we're doing. Um, we are growing, we are moving into other parts of the community, trying to impact, of course, our elementary schools some now because we have sixth graders there. They used to be housed, you know, at either Lottie or our middle school, but now we actually have sixth grade in the elementary school. So that's given us a little bit of a, a spread as well. So just want to thank you all for your help and your support and um, if anybody's interested in mentoring or golfing or playing bingo, we would love to have you come out. Any questions from the board?
No, just thank you for what y'all do so much. It's so important to keep them, you know, going in the right direction and um, thank you all for everything you do.
Living in our community and, and I know I've worked in our community for decades now, but we do have a lot of students that come from a lot of either low income and or maybe single parent or maybe jobs where parents don't make a lot of money or maybe parents work out of town. There's just a, a myriad of reasons why extra support is helpful. So we're here to help any student, anytime that we need anything that helps them get across that graduation stage.
Yeah. And I just would like to say thank you too for, for the good work that you all have done and then the success of this program and the number of students that you've helped over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for mentoring Ms. Spooner.
Yes, thank you so much. Yeah, a hundred percent graduation rate on the students you have, that's awesome. They, they may be kicking and screaming now, but in five years from now, they'll come back and thank you. But um, for sure with that diploma. So thank you so much for all you do for them.
And we're not only about college, we're big on trade schools as well, or helping them start a small business, go to our North Florida Career Technical or an apprenticeship or, so it's not just about college. Of course, that's a choice, but we want them to do whatever they could be successful and happy and remain in our community and be a viable citizen.
And I, I appreciate that, yeah, because I'll be honest, college isn't for everybody.
It's not.
And, and there's a lot of good trades out there.
Excellent.
Working with your hands that you can make a lot of money at nowadays.
One of the, so. One of the young men with one of the scholarships this year, um, I won't share his name because I don't have his permission to do that, but as a senior, he has almost finished his two-year Santa Fe degree, wants to start a plumbing business, already has a part-time job with a local plumber. So he already has an avenue for his apprenticeship, but he wants to go into that as a local business owner with a college degree. So then that combination as well, but that was his choice. I mean, that, that's the way he wanted to do it. So.
That's awesome.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we need a lot of mechanics too, don't we?
Yeah, so we have a lot of success.
We get too many of them retiring right now.
We do have a lot of success stories and we do give students choice in what they want to do. We do share with them different, you know, avenues and ways to just become successful and to keep our young people in Bradford County. I, I really hate to see that are, including my own at the time, they all graduated, there were not jobs here for what they were going to college for. So they had to, to kind of go on and that, that's kind of sad. We have a lot here to offer for our young people, but as they get out and get these degrees and certifications and apprenticeships, hopefully they'll start more businesses in our community and it'll keep our young people here.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, um, Scott Coons, along with the uh, the Regional Florida Tourism Task Force. Thank you, thank you Scott for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of board. I'm Scott Coons. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the executive director for the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Thank you for the invitation to be here for you tonight. I'd like to give you an overview of our organization and then discuss the budget requests we have this year. Council is part of a statewide network of county regional councils. Our mission is to improve the quality of life of our region's citizens by enhancing public safety, protecting regional resources, promoting economic development and providing technical services to local governments. Our region is large in geography, covers twelve counties and forty municipalities, fourteen of which those are member municipalities, eight thousand square miles and over six hundred thousand persons reside in the twelve counties. Council is made up of two-thirds elected officials and the governor has the opportunity to appoint one-third citizens. Uh, your board representative is your chair, Commissioner Reddick. Under state law, counties are required to be members of the regional planning councils and our region and many others across the state cities can be voluntary members. Council was formed in nineteen sixty nine, around for over fifty years. Bradford County has been a member of the regional planning council since nineteen seventy four. Those are our twelve uh, member counties and our fourteen member cities. Council is governed by an executive board of elected officials. Our new chair this year is Commissioner Offord from Latua County. Our vice chair is Commissioner Perkins from Swanee County. Our treasurer is Councilwoman Hawkins from the city of Jasper. Our new secretary is uh, Vice Mayor Bowie Hutchinson from the city of Hawthorne. And our media pass chair is Mayor Hope from the city of Archer. We also have several ex officio members that participate in our organization, the State Department of Commerce, Environmental Protection and Department of Transportation, as well as the three water management districts that cover our twelve counties. We have five, our program areas first is regional. The council has a strategic regional policy plan to guide the growth and development of the region. And we also uh, perform clearinghouse review activities to review uh, large-scale comprehensive plan amendments and provide advisory comments to cities and counties. Our second program is public safety. Uh, we staff the North Central Florida Local Emergency Planning Committee. This is made up of local first responders, emergency managers and fire rescue uh, personnel. Uh, Michael Hader from your emergency management office is your county representative and participates in the organization. Also work with the State Division of Emergency Management on hurricane evacuation studies. Uh, we provide first uh, first responder training for hazardous uh, materials for uh, fire rescue units at no cost to cities and counties. We also staff the North Central Florida Regional Hazmet Response Team, which Bradford County is a participating member. And also under state law, all counties required each year to monitor twenty percent of the businesses that generate hazardous waste. And we provide that service here to Bradford County and several other counties on a cost-for-fee basis. Our third area was economic development. Our third area is economic development. We are designated Federal Economic Development District. Maintains a strategic economic strategy for our region to diversify our economy and also to promote the region for tourism under the Regional Florida Tourism Task Force, which I'll discuss a little bit later. Our fourth area of activity is local government assistance. We have two areas there, comprehensive planning assistance. We provide technical professional services to five counties and fifteen municipalities across our region, assisting them complying the State Community Planning Act and our planning and zoning matters. We also work with several communities and small cities, turn to a block grant program for neighborhood improvements, housing and renovation. Our fifth area is transportation. The program there is transportation disadvantaged. This is a state-funded program to provide paratransit services to low-income, disabled, and elderly individuals to get to life-sustaining activities. Most of those trips, over half of them in our region are for medical appointments, dialysis visits, cancer treatment, and similar activities. And our program this past year coordinated over fifty thousand trips throughout the twelve counties. The Regional Planning Council serves as the official planning entity for that program and develops the annual service plan. Evaluates the service provider, which in Bradford County is the Swanee River Economic Council. Makes some recommendations to state commissioner every five years who should be providing that service. Moving on to the budget request, of your invitation this evening, as I mentioned earlier, the county is a member of the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council and inter-local agency, public organization. By being a member, the county is a part-owner of the Regional Planning Council. And each year, the council assess thirty cents per capita contribution for each member. In this coming fiscal year, the county's contribution will be five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. We use those funds to leverage other grant opportunities. That's only, our member contributions are less than ten percent of our overall budget. And your return investment is about nine to one, based on the funding we're able to bring into the county for transportation disadvantage, the public safety training, and the economic development planning. Second area's request, as I mentioned earlier, is a fee for service for monitoring the hazardous waste generators, which is a state mandate. We conduct the site visits, provide educational information to businesses, and then file the compliance reports with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The second organization is the Regional Florida Tourism Task Force is a separate entity, which the Regional Planning Council provides staff support to. Regional Planning Council formed the Regional Florida Task Force some thirty years ago to promote our twelve counties and two of our neighbors to the west, Jefferson and McCullough, as Visit Natural North Florida to promote ecotourism, cultural, and heritage tourism. That organization applies for each year from the Department of Commerce and receives a regional rural development grant for their marketing program. Some of the benefits of being a participating member each year, they use those grant funds to send three or four task force members to the Southeast Tourism Society's Marketing College, which is a three-year program to become a certified tourism marketer. As well as the opportunity to participate in the Visit Florida Annual Vacation Guide. The task force takes out a two-page spread and pays for over half of the advertisement. And then participating counties are able to also be included in that ad at a substantial discount for their placement. As well as participating Visit Florida Welcome Centers every several months, including tomorrow. Visit Natural North Florida and five or six of our participating counties will be taking over the I-75 Visit Florida Welcome Center, providing tabling inside the welcome center to share information about tourist opportunities in the counties and lodging and other opportunities in those counties. And the contribution to that organization is three thousand dollars. It's based on the first two pennies of your local tourist development tax, commonly referred to as the bed tax. It's a tiered contribution based on the amount of bed tax revenue. The first two pennies here in Bradford County last year generated about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So that is an abandoning, your contribution would be three thousand dollars to the organization. We're able to perform all this work with a very modest, dedicated staff advancing our mission. In summary, we're part of a statewide network, two-thirds elected officials, one-third gubernatorial appointees. We're a planning coordinating entity. Our program and portfolio is very diversified, regional planning to public safety, economic development, local government assistance, and transportation. And we appreciate the county's membership in the organization for over fifty years, as well as your participation in the Regional Florida Tourism Program for over thirty years. Here that concludes my comments. Be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Any questions?
No question, just thanks and appreciation for the services that have been rendered to our county as well as the city over the years.
Thank you.
Yes, I thank you. Definitely thank you. Thanks for coming tonight and with the presentation. No other questions? Yeah, because my dad was on the planning council way back in with the eighties.
Correct.
For probably sixteen years, I guess, something like that, yeah. So, well, thank you very much, Scott.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to item eight. The community organizations, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six fiscal year, fiscal year budget requests approvals?
Mr. Chair, I'd, going back, I know we had everyone come in and do their presentations, but I think we'd also, last year, I know we just decided to keep everyone at the same amount that they were currently at. I think we did have some offer to go a little bit lower. We've had some that have come in higher. But I would like to see us keep it at the same twenty-four, twenty-five budget that we had, with the exception of the Acorn Clinic, who did ask us to go ahead and decrease theirs by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so that's a motion to?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we, we just heard from the two organizations and we would, we need to go ahead and include them in the approval of this because this is the last meeting we'll have before the clerk's office has an opportunity to put it in the budget. So we'll need to include those in this approval process. At whatever level you decide.
Is there, the sheet you gave us, they're included on this?
Yeah, all of them is included. Get us.
In the spreadsheet.
But that's all of them though, correct?
Yeah, the one on the spreadsheet is, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
And then, of course, just one item on the spreadsheet that you need to take a look at is the Bradford Cowboys Athletic Association. It says fifteen thousand, but in previous action, you decided that that money would be moved entirely into the recreation budget.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So we got a motion on that?
Wait a minute, which, which, which one are you guys going on? So you have a different one than we have.
Okay.
I mean, we all got the same thing or should.
So do you have, can you project it on the screen? Or do you have that?
You'll have to go to the.
Can you pull it up on the screen?
No. Okay.
No, but.
Well, I mean, we all got the same stuff. Yeah, I mean, I got one too. I mean, we all should have the same thing.
Yeah, I got the same one as you have.
Okay.
Yeah, there's only, there's only one version of this.
Yeah.
Right.
We're good.
So we have a motion? Do we need a second?
Okay, so let's clarify this motion here. So we need a motion to approve the budget, same as last year, except for the Bradford Cowboys Athletic Association. We're not, we're not going to fund that. We're going to move that funding.
Into the recreation.
Into the recreation.
Correct.
And then the Acorn Clinic, we will fund them, as Commissioner Daultrey said, at the one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars less than last year.
Correct. And then also the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council should be funded at five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for dues.
And the communities and schools?
It's on there, it's on there, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, it's on there.
That shouldn't be on there.
Yeah, five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars for dues. And the only change I see is the Original Florida Task Force should be funded at the three thousand. And it has here, last year we only funded it at two thousand.
And that's where we should keep that, two thousand.
We should keep it.
Okay, so keep it at two thousand?
Keep it at, I mean.
Okay.
No rates.
Okay.
Clerk, is that, is that clear enough? Okay, we're good.
Okay, alright, everybody good with that? Okay, so do I have a motion?
Commissioner Daultrey, make the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion from Commissioner Daultrey.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Thompson. Okay, all in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Alright, item nine, we need to appoint a new recreation board member.
Well, I would nominate you, Ms. Reddick.
And I would second.
And I would third.
You got a fourth, Ms. Spooner?
I appreciate that. I'll do my best on that. Okay, so we have a motion for Commissioner Reddick from Commissioner Daultrey, a second from Commissioner Andrews.
Third from Commissioner Thompson.
Third, and all in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five oh.
Mr. Reddick, can I just add the difference in what we just agreed upon in the community organizations? I know you were looking for an additional fifteen thousand after the sheriff had his contribution. There was the parks contribution, and I think it came down to about a fifteen thousand dollar deficit. So I think you're getting closer.
We're getting closer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway, just want to bring that up.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, okay, moving on to item ten, the clerk's report.
All we have is Dana has our year-to-date report for departments, board departments, from October to twenty-four to June twenty-five. And also, we will need to adopt a millage rate tonight.
Good evening, board.
Evening.
This evening, I plan to present a brief update on revenue and expenditures for the first three quarters of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. If you look at the single sheet I passed out, we will be reviewing the general fund, the fire rescue fund, and the road department fund. First, we have the general fund. We began fiscal year twenty-five with a fund balance of seventeen point nine million. Revenue for the first three quarters was almost seventeen million. Expenditures totaled just over nineteen million, resulting in a use of the fund balance of two point two million dollars for the first three quarters, making the current fund balance fifteen point seven million as of June thirtieth. If revenue and expenditures continue at the same rate, you can expect the fund balance to be around fourteen point nine million by the end of this fiscal year. Do you have any questions about the general fund's third quarter update? Alright, next we have the fire rescue fund. We began fiscal year twenty-five with a fund balance of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. Revenue for the first three quarters, including budgeted transfers from the general fund, was six point four million. Expenditures totaled just over six million, resulting in a savings to the department's fund balance of around four hundred thousand dollars for the first three quarters, making the fire rescues fund balance just over one point two million as of June thirtieth. If revenue and expenditures continue at the same rate, you can expect the fire rescues fund balance to be around one point three million dollars by the end of this fiscal year. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Finally, we have the road department's fund balance. I mean, fund. We began fiscal year twenty-five with a fund balance of just over a million dollars. Revenue for the first three quarters, including budgeted transfers from the general fund, was just over two million. Expenditures totaled just under one point nine million, resulting in a savings to the department's fund balance of around fifty-five thousand dollars for the first three quarters, making the road, road department's fund balance almost one point one million as of June thirtieth. If revenue and expenditures continue at the same rate, you can expect the road department's fund balance to be around one point one million by the end of this fiscal year. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Questions? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, the board will need to set the proposed millage rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six tonight in order to stay on schedule with the trim timetable. The trim timetable calls for the clerk to present a tentative budget on Tuesday, August fifth. Before you, is a spreadsheet outlining your options and setting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six millage rate. Your current rate is ten mils. If you keep the rate at ten mils for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, you may expect to generate fifteen million, five hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. This is an increase of one point four million dollars from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The next one, a decreased rate of nine point seven five would generate fifteen million, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. This is an increase of just over a million dollars from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. A decreased rate of nine point five would generate fourteen point seven million dollars. This is an increase of six hundred ninety-five thousand from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The rollback rate is nine point four six six, which would generate fourteen point six million. This is an increase of six hundred forty-two thousand from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. A decreased rate of nine point one one zero four would generate fourteen million, one hundred thirty-six thousand. This is an increase of ninety thousand over fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. A decreased rate of nine point zero would generate thirteen million, nine hundred, nine hundred sixty-four thousand, which is a decrease of eighty thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. As you discuss your options tonight, please remember that whatever you set your proposed millage rate at tonight, the property appraiser will use that rate on the trim notices that are scheduled to be mailed out to all taxpayers on August fifteenth. On September ninth, the board will hold its first public hearing, where you will adopt a tentative millage rate. This is, it is not recommended that you increase the proposed rate you set tonight. An increase would have an impact to the trim timetable and it would require the property appraiser to mail out new trim notices. So I ask that you please set the proposed millage rate tonight.
Okay, board?
So, it's, I think, it's you, well, you guys' recommendation that we keep it at the same millage in order to generate the maximum that we can for this year. Because you haven't really, we haven't been at the position to collect any kind of assessment at this point.
We can't drop it down.
We have no idea. I mean, we know about what's going to come in.
Yeah.
We can't drop it down.
Not until we get the first year's worth of fire assessment.
So I just, you, it seems that we need to keep it at the ten mils. So we'll make a motion to keep that the ten mils.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Spooner, second from Commissioner Thompson. Any other discussion? All in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff report?
He's not here, but I was going to speak up about something real fast. Ms. Strong had asked about housing inmates. Number one, our judges aren't going to catch and release people around here. I mean, there will be certain offenses, first-time misdemeanor offenses. But we already house approximately fifty, like the sheriff told me today, fifty-two federal inmates that we've always housed. It dropped during COVID, they cut them all loose. It dropped during COVID, they cut them all loose during COVID. We've been housing fifty for probably twelve, fourteen years. And that's about the max we can handle.
And that money goes into the jail setup.
Pardon?
Yeah, all that goes in the jail setup.
It's not, it's a hundred and twenty. All right.
And I think sheriff's getting around seventy-eight or eighty right now, somewhere seventy, eighty range.
Okay. Thank you. All right, county managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item on our agenda is to ask for the approval to release an RFQ for the real estate broker services for the marketing of the county's one hundred thousand square foot warehouse and attached acreage.
Let's do it.
Yeah, we need a motion, a second, and vote.
Oh, for the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Spooner?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Dawdery. Any questions?
I have a question, where will we advertise this, other than in the Bradford County Telegraph?
We'll put it on our website, and, uh, what would be some other, Rachel, what would be some other avenues to, to advertise for that? Can, say it again? Northeast Florida?
Yeah, that'd be probably the best place.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good, we have a motion and a second, all in favor by a sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, I'd like to ask Michael Heater to come up and give us an update on the Splash Bash and events going forward.
Good evening, folks, Michael Heater. I want to ask Chief Carter to come up because I wanted to commend him publicly, even though it's second place. We love you. Uh, earlier today, the sheriff's office took on fire rescue in a blood drive, Battle of the Badges. The sheriff's office squeaked out a few more donors than fire rescue did, so we are temporarily holding the trophy as the winner of the Battle of the Badges. However, I think our next one's scheduled for October, uh, probably during Fire Prevention Week, which means that ought to be interesting. Uh, but we wanted to, I want to public, publicly commend Chief Carter's department, uh, for the personnel that turned out because, uh, we spent public safety together, spent our day saving lives one pint at a time. So I want to say thank you publicly.
I would just, I would like to add that they have guns for persuasion, so I think they have advantage.
I struggled with this because as a thirty-plus-year fireman, I was kind of torn between it, but then I realized, okay, well, one guy signs the checks.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Cornigay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'll be very brief about, uh, what we're gonna be doing. Uh, we did a, uh, had our Splash Bash, it was our fourth event this year, our second at the fairgrounds. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Uh, yeah, battling bronchitis, um, and, uh, we had a good turnout of people. Last year was a three-day event, we scaled it back, uh, with financial concerns, but we still had between three thousand and thirty-five hundred people turn out. Uh, fireworks was a twelve-minute show, we had seven giant water slides, live music, food trucks, and for the first time in four years, we had zero injuries. We've always had, you know, somebody got hurt, bloody nose, this, that, or whatever like that, when in fire rescue's always been there to take care of it. This year, with the additional staffing that we provided, uh, thanks to the high school's JROTC program, we're able to have enough eyes on the field to keep the little ones safe. So I'm very pleased to report that we had zero injuries and, uh, only one minor law enforcement issue that was resolved quickly. Um, the other good news is, is that the First Development Council approved fifty-five hundred dollars for advertising. We spent fourteen hundred, so we are gonna be returning four thousand, one hundred dollars back to TDC that we can use for other programs and other initiatives as we move forward. Um, we have several things coming down the pipe. We had a meeting this evening to talk about the, the fair coming up in the springtime. Uh, we are, we are making progress. We've got some good, uh, and I'm not gonna steal any thunder like that one, I will tell you that we're making progress, and we're excited about what's gonna be happening with the all-new and improved fair moving forward. Uh, we have a big plan coming up for October with a car show, a touch of truck, and, uh, we've been requested by the state of Florida's Model Railroad Association to host their annual meeting. So we're gonna do it around the same time in October and do a giant cranes, trains, and automobiles event for the public. Uh, so we'll have a vintage car show that's being brought in as a, uh, for cancer, uh, charity, a touch of truck, and model trains for the kids and everybody to look at. So we've got a number of items coming down the pipe. Just so you know, we've had a request from the state's, uh, remote-controlled airplane clubs if we would, if Bradford County would be able to host an, our remote-controlled airshow, uh, here. All of these events are going to be something that we can charge for, so we can charge admission to the different festivals that we're talking about, the Sounds on the Grounds concert series that we're generating. Um, and we're starting to, I've had conversations with Mr. Cornigay about how we can start working towards, uh, generating some, some income and some revenue on this one. So I myself, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm real excited about what the future holds for the, for the grounds. I, I think that we're in, moving in the right direction, and it's baby steps. We know we're not gonna be able to come up with one point five or one point seven million like that. But we have a vision on where we want to go with this. And ultimately, as this moves into the association and, and we start building on something, I think you're gonna hit a point that you can look back on this in the years to come and realize that we are, we're on the precipice of something great, and I'm really excited about it. And I will finish up with one last thing, and that is, Ms. Spooner, thank you for making the appearance at the parade, uh, and at the bash. The parade went off without a hitch, uh, and we had nearly one hundred seniors and veterans that came from the nursing home because of the parade route going by all the nursing homes in Stark. And they had, I think it was between eighty and, eighty to a hundred people just from the nursing homes that came out from the facilities to watch the parade. Lot of compliments on that, so we're, we're excited about, uh, what's happened. Next year will be our fifth, it's also our two-hundred-fiftieth birthday, and we've already stayed, started laying the groundwork for what's gonna be probably our biggest Fourth of July event in history. So with that, I appreciate it. I'll entertain any questions that you may have or anything else.
Um, Mr. Chair, just a comment, I just want to commend you, uh, Ms. Heater, you know, we had some awful weather during that time, but despite that, you know, everything just went off this super, and, uh, all of the participants, but especially wanted to thank you for the elders, for the senior citizens that are in the nursing facilities, really, really appreciate it, feeling like they're, they're not forgotten.
Correct.
And so that was a big plus, and all of the activities at the fairgrounds for the kids and family.
Yeah. Lot of fun, we had a really good time, and I, I, I mean, anyone who knows me knows that my age is an average because mentally I'm still eight years old, and I think like a kid because I act like one, and, uh, I am, uh, I, I enjoy getting out and doing stuff, especially for kids. So for me, uh, it's a labor of love.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. So, Mr. Chairman, there's another item, it's not on the agenda, but this came up like this afternoon. Uh, Chief Carter would like to come up and explain to you an opportunity for a grant, uh, to, to fund a combined opioid response team. So Chief Carter, if you'll, uh, if you'll do that for us?
Good evening, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Um, first, before I started, we do want to say I just returned from, uh, my chief's conference this, this past week, got back yesterday as a matter of fact. Um, and I want to publicly acknowledge, uh, Chief Harold Theis from Alachua County was named as the Fire Chief of the Year for the state of Florida. Uh, huge accomplishment for him, he's been a great mentor and friend for me, so I just wanted to publicly, uh, recognize him and congratulate him on his, uh, achievement. I come before you this evening to talk about a grant opportunity, it's the First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Grant. It's funded through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Uh, this is a, a great opportunity for us, we're missing a big, um, a, a big population that I think we could, that could really benefit from our services. As you know, our community resource paramedic program has been a, a great success, uh, thus far, and this is really just an expansion on that. Uh, this is a combined effort with the Bradford County Sheriff's Office. The sheriff and I have met about this, he's one hundred percent on board and supportive of this. And what this would allow us to do is take what's already been, uh, put in place with the community paramedicine program and expand that to twenty-four-seven coverage. As you know, uh, David Weeks, Lieutenant Weeks, works a, a forty-hour schedule and is not available at night times and weekends typically. You know, he will come out after hours, uh, but, you know, to be able to have this, this twenty-four-seven would be an incredible addition to our community. Not to mention, again, the, the, uh, population of patients I was speaking of earlier that we, that we miss out on is the people that interact with law enforcement. Law enforcement, a lot of the times, will go to, respond to a mental health call, um, and we will never know that even happens. And so law enforcement will deal with that, they'll either, you know, recommend the Baker Act, or they'll, they'll transport to a Baker Act facility, um, or they'll, they'll, you know, uh, follow up with the patient later on. But we never have any contact with them, and a lot of the times, there's, that, that patient never follows up with a Meridian or, uh, you know, some sort of, um, help further on beyond that. And so again, this would provide twenty-four-seven response, not just from our agency, but also from the sheriff's office. So this would be, provide a combined, uh, response. And then, again, as I mentioned, Meridian earlier, would also provide a partnership with them, uh, to have a mental health counselor on call twenty-four-seven as well. This also would expand our medication-assisted therapy program to twenty-four-hour access. So if we get someone who's in withdrawals at two o'clock in the morning, we can start treatment right then. Um, this is an opportunity for up to eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, per year, for up to four years of funding. So a significant amount of money, uh, a big opportunity here for us, there's no county match, and, um, all staff that would be hired for this, uh, team would be fully aware that this is a grant-funded program with no guarantee of funding in the future beyond the four years. And typically, as you know, I like to put together presentations, and I don't bring things before you last minute, I try to be well-prepared for, uh, for these things. This is a, an opportunity that kind of fell in our lap and was, uh, was something that we felt we were, we're very well positioned to, uh, to move forward with. And so it was, uh, something that the application is due on Tuesday, July twenty-second, so that's next Tuesday. Uh, we're putting this together again in coordination with the sheriff's office and their team as well, so, um, it, it really, I think, is a unique, unprecedented, uh, unprecedented opportunity for us to collaborate with the sheriff's office and bring this resource to our community, and, and again, just, just a benefit, uh, to the public at no cost to the taxpayers, which is what we've been able to accomplish thus far with this program and just continuing on with that. And so I would just ask for, for approval to move forward with, um, with applying for that grant. I didn't, something of this magnitude and, and this amount of money, I did not want to come, you know, come before the board after the fact and say, hey, we, we applied for this, even though there is no county match, so. Um, I wanted your, your support before moving forward with, uh, with something like this.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Ask consensus, let them go forward.
Chief, what, what's, what's the name of the grant again?
It is the First Responders, uh, Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act.
I'll get with you after.
Okay, I can give you the funding number and everything as well.
Submit, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We need to make that as a motion, or can we just all agree?
No, we'd, consensus will be fine for tonight, and then what we'll do is we'll go ahead and make application, and then at the next board meeting, we'll have it on the consent agenda for retroactive approval.
Okay, sounds good.
Perfect.
Yep, we have a consensus. Okay.
Are they gonna pay for the vehicles and stuff out of the grant?
Uh, everything could be, is, is fundable through that, uh, through that grant, yes, sir, absolutely. Fundable, is that a word, fundable? That's right. I don't know. If not, it is now.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank y'all, thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, county attorneys report?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Dawdery?
Hey, so we have a new CFO, not sure if y'all are aware of that, uh, Blazing Goglia, I think's how you say his last name, uh, Pasco County. Um, just want to remind everybody that, uh, where he has a lot of, uh, good things that, uh, he's gonna do for our state, and, uh, he has hell-bent on property taxes, um, so just like we've been hearing a lot from the legislators about that, so again, just keep that in mind when items come up, and, you know, we've talked about this before, that, uh, uh, not, not to be doom and gloom, but, you know, we, we certainly need to be looking after, fiscally looking after everything that we can, and, um, just hoping that at some point, somebody will, uh, realize the impact. But, uh, he certainly, uh, as the new, uh, what, the CFO is also the state fire marshal?
That's correct.
Yeah. Um, I know that he has, uh, put all of his support behind first responders, uh, fire rescue, and, uh, law enforcement, so we always like to see that. Um, but like I said, there's that one bullet point that just need, everybody needs to keep in mind about property taxes, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do have, I just want to acknowledge, um, um, our legislator, um, Senator Jennifer Bradley. You know, there's a saying in the Good Book, um, and it says, um, "How beautiful are the feet of those who bring good news of good things." And Senator Bradley has some beautiful feet. She is that saint on the hill tops of Tallahassee. She looks out for our county and our community, and I just want to thank her from the depth of my heart uh, for pushing forward, um, the appropriations for the RJE Phase Three renovation. Um, that is gonna help our community tremendously. I think, um, Representative Chuck Brennan, and even, um, be- before him, the others who had tried to, to help us, but I'm eternally grateful, uh, for that, for our community, it's gonna make a very big difference. But I want her to know how grateful we are, uh, for her work in Tallahassee, as well as, um, Representative Brennan. Um, and also, just wanted to, I acknowledged the, the good work that Ms. Heater did, and, and he went over that. Um, but we had an opportunity, and, um, Mr. Cornigay was there for the co-owners', um, meeting. So we had a chance to hear from the PACE, um, program, um, out of, um, Orange Park. And I hope that they can come and present to our board, because that's a significant program that would have significant impact and helpfulness towards the children or the, or the young girls in our community. So I would ask, um, that we had them on our agenda, uh, sometime in the very, very near future, but they offer services that would help, um, with, with counseling, preventing kids from dropping out of school, and a follow-up with them that would be a benefit, so I'm, I'm thankful, uh, that we can have that done. Um, and, um, that, those were the important things, so we're gonna be moving forward in our community and making some good things happen. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we currently have PACE tentatively scheduled for the second meeting in August, so we look forward to having them here and, and make the presentation. Um, several weeks ago, Commissioner Dawdery and I and some others in the, in the, uh, community traveled up to Orange Park to take a tour of the facility and get a, a presentation from them, and it's absolutely amazing. And there's no question in any of our minds that have, have seen it so far, know that there is a need in Bradford County for those services. So hopefully, when they come before this board, uh, there'll be a momentum and a, uh, an appetite and a willingness to move forward with, with that program.
And if I could just add to that, and, and Ms. Roden was there too, thank you, um, if I could just add that, uh, it's a state-funded program, and so currently, their REACH program, where they would come into the schools and offer the counseling and assistance, um, you know, it's not anything that right now they're looking to have a brick-and-mortar type facility, but at some point, um, you know, we need to look around at, at, uh, like maybe RJE or, uh, you know, some other, uh, facility that we could, um, be able to have them at, where they could actually, you know, have their programs and, and, uh, assist with the, the young ladies and that, that need the, need the help, so, anyway, just wanted to add to that, go ahead, sorry. Yep, go ahead, yeah, thank you.
Mr.?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, uh, thank everybody for coming out, I know a bunch of them's gone, but I appreciate y'all coming out. Makes us feel better when we got a room. Thank y'all, y'all have a good weekend and a safe weekend.
Oh, can I, one more thing, I wanted to acknowledge my friend, um, Ms. Norma, Commissioner Norma from the city of Loudie who came out, um, this evening, and she is, um, the person for the hub in Loudie. Yeah, thank you.
Thank, thank you for coming, thank you.
I would just like to also thank everybody for coming. Sometimes it's, it's, uh, very uncomfortable when we make decisions like we did tonight. Um, but I just hope and pray that everyone knows that we're trying to do the best for the county that we possibly can. And I think we did that tonight. Um, so I appreciate each one of you, um, for our teamwork that was obvious tonight, so. Um, and other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, and I too thank every one of y'all for coming tonight. Really do appreciate it. Uh, board, thank y'all so much for, uh, allowing me to serve on the, uh, athletic board. Um, I will tell you this, I've had a meeting with the city last week, uh, trying to get things organized. I had a meeting today with, um, our clerk and Mrs. Roden and county manager, and, um, trying to make sure we get it right. Um, now we're gonna be putting it in the attorney's hands, uh, from the attorney from the city, the attorney from Stark, and, I mean, from the city and our attorney to, um, come up with, uh, what's the best way to move forward from here as far as the accounts and starting to get things going, but, um, really excited. Um, I will tell you this, I continue to constantly keep having calls, uh, people encouraging, and, um, just wanting to see this really work. So, um, I'll keep you updated as we move along, and, um, I, I believe the city was supposed to have a meeting this past Tuesday where they picked, uh, their person to sit on the board. Uh, the TDC board won't meet again until, um, the next Thursday in August, so we won't know who's gonna be on the board from the TDC yet. And then after that, we will, um, put up kind of like a resume or something, kind of like we did with the fair, send it out for people to fill it, fill it in and, um, why they would like to serve on that athletic board, and, uh, hopefully, we can get four real good citizens to serve on that board along with the three standing members, and, uh, then we'll move forward in trying to hire the right person for the athletic director. So that's kind of where we're at right now. But, um, but again, thank y'all. Thank everyone for being here. Uh, if there's nothing else, come before the board. Meetings adjourned.